So I'd like to welcome everyone back to our July meeting for the School Committee of Hatfield. I'm Kristy Boudreau, and we're just completing executive session, which was the first thing on our agenda. And now it's time to move to informational reports, and I'll pass it over to Mr. Wood.
Okay. So this is kind of an odd thing here. I've got to figure out where everything is. This new land of technology that we have here.
Yeah. So it may be worth noting to anyone who's following along at home that we are attempting to be paperless today.
Because we still have paper in front of us.
We have some long-term paper, but for most of our stuff, we're looking electronically.
Yes.
I think I've got the old edition here. So, sorry about that. So here are the personnel report, just the new hires. I think people will go into them more specifically in terms of their individual reports when they're here. Mrs. Petra couldn't be here. She was on vacation before this meeting was scheduled. So we did have a more recent resignation from Hatfield Elementary School. Renee Gourick resigned. She's moving to the Ludlow School System. We certainly wish her well. We're in process with our hiring, going very well. Principals have acted, directors have acted very aggressively, and so I think we've only got PE at the high school left, special education at, and speech and language, although we have a finalist. And I think we're all done at HES, so we're in good shape, which is always...
Do we have one retirement that maybe didn't make the list? Because it was prepped earlier?
I'm wondering, yeah.
The staff?
Oh, yes, thank you. Robin...
Volinger.
Volinger, thank you, has retired. She announced very last minute. What was it, like, we ended school on a Wednesday...
She wanted to keep it.
Low-key, yeah. So she told me, I think, on Tuesday and left. She's working a few days just to train the new person who started today. So, yeah, so we wish her well in her retirement. I think that's it. I know you don't have the report, but I assume you would know differently. Year-end balances, these are, this is something that Riley and I will work on together throughout the year, but I wanted to come up with a report that would be in a one-pager so that everybody can see where our accounts are for the year. We haven't obviously met with our accountant yet to close out FY '22, so there will be some adjustments based on something that, you know, the town accountant needs to do. But this gives you a pretty good idea of what our balances are in all of our accounts, other than, you know, obviously, the, and then the school budget and the school choice budget on the back page. So these are the major accounts. We do get incidental grants that are not funding, they're funding very specific programs or activities that are not listed here, that we will apply for, some of which will be state, some of which will be private. But these are grants of, you know, sizable amounts, usually about 2,500 or more. And so, gives you a good picture.
I'm sorry, is that date on here of April 8th the correct date?
No.
Or what is the date of these balances?
These are today's dates.
As of today?
As of today.
Okay, thank you.
And are we anticipating that we'll have updated school year budget to share probably in August?
Yeah, she's working on that now, trying to align, and we're making some line adjustments, and again, working with our accountant to do that.
And some of that would be, we'd need to wait till we had a ratified contract...
That's right.
...to finish that work.
Correct. So that might not be ready for August 3rd, because if we...
It could be later in August.
It might be later, because we won't move the salaries until it's absolutely ratified. So that might be our September meeting or something like that. We'll do those adjustments. Just obviously notable is our preschool deficit. It's my understanding we've always had a deficit to start the year off with in the preschool. I know this year, when I came onboard, we were like $19,000 in deficit, so we've come, you know, we've reduced it by about $8,000. And there is still some collections that still need to be paid, so we're working on that. It's, preschools are inherently challenging, and so we are working on that to get those paid, but that's where we'll, the estimated starting balance.
Are there questions from the committee?
My only question about the personnel report, what timeframe does this reflect?
It should reflect pretty current. I think we're...
But starting back from, like, since our last meeting, or...
Let's see, '06, '08, roughly, yes, I would say.
Okay.
So just lastly, in my report, just making it easier instead of scrolling through, for instruction, we did go ahead and make a decision, our committee made a decision on math series. So we're going to go with the iReady Math Series as our entire program. We'll be doing that K to 8, and the materials, the math materials are actually in. We're in the process of planning our PD for everybody to do that, so we're very excited. I did apply for a grant that would help with the purchase of this. I'm not confident in getting it, because their timeline didn't, and I talked to somebody at the conference recently I attended, their timeline was June 10th, and we didn't make our decision until June 14th, and so they wouldn't accept proposals if you didn't already have your purchase order for your purchase, so, but...
Would we qualify in a year?
I don't know if it's going to be out again. I assume these are funds, because it became available, like, in late April, early May, or something like that. And, so I'm not sure about that. I just don't know what they're...
Would you repeat the name of what you selected?
iReady.
Okay. Just making sure I got that.
And we're also starting to look at having conversations about literacy materials. We have a clear program of service for our K to 3. It's going to be in the second grade this year. We've done K and 1, and called foundations. We're starting to have some conversation about what we should provide to our students and staff for grades 4 through 8. So we actually have materials for, that have a consistent curriculum outlined and mapped. You know, we want our teachers to have some professional latitude, but especially if you're at any time or giving, having a brand-new teacher, you want to be able to provide them with the guidance of a program that has the curriculum pretty well attached to it, and then as they become more experienced, they can supplement and make adjustments as they experience why those adjustments and supplements are needed. So we hope to have some recommendations in the coming months for that. If it, if we get lucky and get this grant, that would give us some freedom, because I would move some money around, and maybe we could look at doing something there. So we will definitely pay attention to that grant opportunity and other grants as well. Our students, our custodians are very busy with the summer cleaning schedule. They're doing a great job at both schools. We want to make sure, one of the things I want to make sure is that they get their vacation time, and many of them do take some summertime, so we really want to make sure that their schedules, and they support each other in both schools, so that schedules can stay on schedule. And so, but they're both looking very, very good, and I'm very hopeful that we'll be staying on schedule for the remainder of the summer. We, our Sims report has been submitted to DESI with no student issues. We're finishing up, that's the student portion of that report. We're finishing up the teacher evaluation piece and administrator evaluation piece, and so we will send that in as well. All of them are done. Actually, the last one is the superintendent's evaluation. So we're working on security constantly, but we still are monitoring our security issues that we have in our buildings. As you know, our primary and best resource to fight anybody getting into the building is making sure that our buildings lock and have a good procedure for that, for our staff, our students, and our families who want to get access to our offices and still remain a very friendly and welcoming place. So we're working on that as well. We are, I'm in conversations with company that's actually replacing the town's phone system for this building, and there are other buildings in town, for Smith Academy. One of the, one of the issues we have that we identified in our April safety meeting was that not, we can't call out of our phones in Smith Academy, and not all rooms have phones at Smith Academy. So that's one of the pieces of the puzzle that we were trying to address, and we do have that annual town meeting warrant article money available to us to take a look at that. So we're, we're going to look at that. The other piece of that, sort of a nexus to that, is that our phone bills are outrageous, and so there's something amiss with how we get billed with our phone system. So hopefully by replacing it, we will reduce our monthly use as well. These will be voice-over-IP phones, and so we're hopeful, it won't increase the number of lines, at least right now, we're not going to increase the number of lines we have coming into the building, but we'll, with voice-over IP, it'll give us greater latitude to use and have access for classrooms. The other thing is that, just very selfishly, there's, the phone system that we're talking about with this company will also replace our paging system and intercom system at Smith Academy, and that big lovely black box that's in the main office that takes up three-by-three square feet, or three-by-nine-by-three, probably, that can go away. So that's 1980s vintage furniture.
Going to auction that off, or...
Yeah, yeah. So somebody will...
Offer it to the museum.
The walkway project that we're in partnership with the CPA is, has begun. The DPW, who's our partner that's doing services in-kind, is present and has material on site, and we're working with the conservation committee. We have a meeting this coming Thursday to talk to them about the final piece that we need to get approved is the piece closest to the wetlands. And many thanks to Phil Genovese, who's been taking the lead on that and has filled out the paperwork on that, and has submitted that to the committee for that meeting. We're in the process, it's summertime, updating student records and contact information for contacts with parents and guardians, so we're in the process of moving files from HES up to the Smith Academy and making sure that all of our new registrants get added into our system with Rediker. We're going to be working on our website to update for our staff and our parents, the forms that we ask for parents. We're looking at ways to make those forms fillable, adapted, or adapted forms, I guess, right from the site, so they can be either off the website or a phone, to make it really easy for parents and for staff for filling out leave forms and things of that nature, so they have access, or PD requests. This was something they asked of, and so we're looking into that. I'm actually meeting with somebody tomorrow to discuss that piece of the puzzle, so that we can do that. We also, just an FYI, over the course of the year, we'll be looking at our need for our website to be, to be migrating over to a new company. The current, the current company that does, does not support the model of the website that we have currently, so we need, we need to change that. So I haven't had enough time to talk to the people about whether they have a new model they want us to look at or not, but we certainly want to look at something that's more user-friendly in general, both by the end user, but also the staff, to be able to update. Right now, we have kind of this odd system where to get pictures on there, we have to contact the website company. I mean, it's really very interesting, so. And I'm just back, I just went to the superintendent's conference. It was a great, great experience, it's the first time I've been in a few years, and their main emphasis was on diversity, equity, and inclusion, which was great, and got some ideas. My former colleagues always get nervous when I come back from these events, because I have come back with these ideas of what we've got to do, and so we'll be meeting about that very shortly. But I did, I think there is, I made a nice contact for PD that we can do affordably and for all of our staff around diversity, equity, and inclusion, and really try to weave it into time of our early release, if we want to do it then, or maybe in our March Day, or maybe even design a course that we could sign people up for, for the, over the course of the year. So we're definitely looking forward to that as well.
I have some questions, if it's okay.
I was just, are, do you want to, are there other reports you want to chime in before we start? Questions? Or can we take that separately?
We can take that separately.
Okay. Kathy?
The first, first bullet there in management and operations about the school inspections. Do you know when the inspections will take place? I'm only asking, because it says late August, staff comes in on the 29th. It has happened in the past that inspectors have found something.
Right.
And, you know, then there's, oh, I'm not going to let you open, and I'm just trying to prevent any kind of panic two days before students come in.
Right, right.
That if our inspection is the week before, or when it is in August, so that if anything comes up, we have time to address it.
Yeah, I mean, I'll coordinate with Phil and obviously our custodians to make sure that we think they're ready, but our goal is really to have it done probably the third week of August rather than the fourth week of August, so that we're ready.
But even if they're, if the custodians are leaving something for that last week that isn't something that is inspected?
Right, right.
You know, whether it's floors or...
Exactly.
Painting, or, you know, like, something that...
Yeah, we want to target that third week.
Okay.
Look at those, for the kitchens, for HVAC, air quality, air handlers, and so forth.
I remember one year they came through and decided that many of our door handles were not appropriate.
Sure.
And needed to be replaced, and they're old door handles, and we had a hard time repairing or replacing them. So that was just...
I can see that happening.
A little moment of panic that I'd like to avoid.
You and me as well.
Talking about the phone upgrades, is this something that we need to get bids for?
So they're, they're on the state bid list, so we don't need to get bids for, and since the town has already, we can kind of jump on their bid, if you will, since we're a part of the town, but I will do some due diligence around getting, getting three quotes.
And is it worth looking at the elementary school, or the phone system and the intercoms down there working well?
I would want to talk, well, I mean, Connor's here, but I mean, I think we did do some upgrades in this past fall. I think all, all the rooms have phones, and I believe they all can, they all can call out.
The issues we had there were, there were a couple that weren't, that they needed to be fixed. They, you'd pick them up and there would be no dial tone, but those were fixed. And there were a couple of staff that we had moved that we needed the phones to track to the right person, and those were, I believe those are all addressed in the fall.
I just thought if we're doing it in one building, is it worthwhile to make sure we don't need to do it in the near future for the other building?
I believe that's, it's a great point, and I think, given the relative amount, the thinking this is going to come in, we probably would have the money, resources to do it. It's a relatively new phone system, is what I understand, the one at the elementary school.
At the elementary school?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought, was that one not replaced, like, 10 years ago, something, or years ago?
Not sure.
Okay.
I know, I've heard, like, some of the clocks don't work in the room, and so I just was wondering, like, I know that's a different...
It's sort of universal in schools and institutional buildings.
Isn't it crazy?
Clocks just don't work.
So I just wondered about the phones as well, and if it made any sense to have the HES phones system match, have it be the same system in both buildings.
I would love that.
Because would you then be able to, from one building...
Ideally, yes.
Easily...
Right.
Dial an extension to get up there? I don't know if it's...
The town right now has that ability to call HES with their phone system, but we can't do it out of Smith Academy.
We can call from HES to Smith with an extension.
Oh, you can?
I don't know that the other way around.
Okay. I know, I'm totally can't. I have tried it.
So maybe it's worth just checking if we need new phones there as well?
Yeah, it's definitely worth looking at, absolutely.
And the last question I had was about the website, which I think is fabulous idea to have the forms on there for people to be able to fill out, so that we're not losing forms in backpacks and they're not getting back. Will our new director of technology also be updating the website as far as new school committee members, new personnel, new staff, you know, all of that?
The administrators will work on it to do that.
Great. That's it. Thank you.
Other questions? I have a couple of questions. The, for the, with the personnel report, what postings are not filled but are still currently posted? Do we have any of those?
Mine is, I think we have PE, we have speech, excuse me, special education, and, well, technically, speech and language. And do we have one other, do we have a para posting that we...
No.
No, or else out there?
Yeah, we hired the admin assistant, we hired the inclusion specialist, we are in the process of a finalist with SLP, and we are getting there for a star potential person, so we're getting there.
And are we hiring a math, is there a math interventionist position that's open at HES, or no?
It, yes, and it was, we've already hired for it.
Okay, and that's filled?
Yes.
Okay. And then is, is there any foundations PD that is...
There is some for our incoming, for our second-grade teacher staff.
For second grade?
Right, they didn't have it this past year.
It was supposed to be the first year.
And one already has it.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I don't know, too, just, I had heard through the grapevine that there's, there's an SRSD, the writing curriculum, that there's a lot of grant opportunities there that are, tied to research and through the states. I don't know if anybody was looking at that, but...
So we had, I think, a grant, or we were part of a grant up to last year, but going forward, we're on our own, so we'll take another look.
Yeah, I think that's how it was onboarded, it was through a grant.
Oh, okay. Excellent. All right, that's all I have.
And the other open one is the HES art teacher, right? That's not Phil yet?
That's right, yes, yes. I'm not, it's so new, I don't even know, I don't think that's posted yet. No, she did it on Friday, I didn't see it.
Other questions? Just, I know you had mentioned it, but I just wanted some clarity on the professional development for the new math series. That's, that's all planned, it's happening, just in those first days.
Right, it's being planned, we're working with the company.
Okay.
Set that up. And that will actually be a couple of different sessions over the course of the year.
And then you had said that the program has a diagnostic tool to monitor progress. Is this like, like student formative assessments, or...
Exactly.
Okay, and are the staff gonna, I guess you said there will be more PDs, so the staff will have continued support throughout the year?
Correct.
Okay.
And did you, okay, so I think I'm down to one. Talking about foundations and PD, so it sounds like every year we're stepping up with the same class. Is there a point at which everybody further down the line gets trained, or is it always going to be this one group of kids will be the cutting edge for every teacher learning a new curriculum, like...
It'll always be this, so we're doing second this year, we'll do third next year, and that then ends, because that's as far as the program goes.
Okay.
So we've got, then we've got to look for training, a program and training for our 4 through 6, or hopefully actually 4 through 8.
Okay. So as you guys look at that, is there conversation about, is there an impact, the first year someone does something new, is it like, Renee Brown has some conversations about first times, and first times? And so I'm just realizing that there is, the same group of kiddos is going to be every teacher's first time with that, and so is there, is there room or opportunity for that to evolve, so that at some point it's, they're not always the first? You know, do 4th, 5th, and 6th graders all onboard on that at the same time for the next pass?
Yeah, so we'll probably be looking at something for, for that group to work together. That way, there's also a larger group cohort of adults learning, and they, there can be more sharing.
Okay.
The program only goes through 3rd grade.
Right.
Nice, what we're talking about, because we're talking about on the special ed side as well as, for special education, we need to do something this coming year for 4th grade, but in talking with Melissa, so I think that's going to be there once that class gets there.
That won't be brand-new for them.
Yeah, because we're going to onboard some things with our special ed teachers this next year, but then have general ed teachers maybe grab onto it. So hopefully by the time this pilot group that's going into 2nd right now, it will have already been in 4th for at least a year ahead of them. We have to catch that wave.
Yeah, okay.
That makes sense.
I'm sure they're a fabulous pilot group. They're going to be great. So, okay. So now we'll move on to technology services and school choice class size.
Yes, so technology, I just want to make you aware, so we did a search, we had great candidates for our technology director position. He was hired, he went back to do the transition from his district to our district, and they transitioned to a network company, IT Souzer, Souzer IT, which happens to also do Hatfield Technology Program, and they were so impressed with him, they offered him a job. And so he's thinking about going to work for this IT company. The, and I, we can't compete with what they're offering him. The good news is, he doesn't want to leave us in a lurch, and so he's, he is willing, and Souzer IT has indicated they're willing, although I don't know how long they'll wait, to wait for him, so that he could, the things we've talked about are, we could wait the year, or we could look at our own transition plan. Souzer IT has offered to come in and pick up the pieces and provide us with a similar plan that they provide other school districts, and this, this is their field. They primarily work with municipal community technology and school community, and they, that's, that's what they do. So I've met with the head of Souzer IT, I've had an interesting conversation, we're going to have a follow-up conversation. I want to, there's other companies I want to talk to. I've been putting out... There's other companies I want to talk to, I've been putting out, talking to other colleagues that have worked with Souzer IT to see, I've talked to our town administrator, because they just came onboard, I think, in January. And so I want to talk with that. Obviously, Mr. Snyder, Ben Snyder, who's the Director of Technology, came on in July, he's conflicted, but obviously you have to make best choices for your family, and I certainly respect that. So, you know, that's where we are, we're kind of in a holding pattern, if you will, he's moving forward, he's working hard, he's doing the things that I'm asking him to do, and we'll, we'll kind of move along and see what other kinds of things that we have as options for ourselves to do. So I just wanted to make you aware of what's going on in my head in my office.
What, what would be the benefit or the loss of having a company do that for us, rather than having a person in-house within our buildings on a day-to-day basis?
Right, so, at least for the model that Souzer IT presents, is that they continue to present, they would, they have a person identified as your director, so that person handles all of that, that level of leadership. They do attach a day to their calendar to be with you in district for a full day. They have a tech person assigned to your district. They essentially do it as a team approach, and they have a tech person assigned to your district, and that person also would do a day. We might do more or less, depending on what kind of actual tech work we think is necessary. But they have a tech team that is always available, a help desk that's always available to us, and if there's ever an emergency, they can send somebody out to us. So, so as far as that, at least as they present, and the people that I've spoken to, they are very responsive, and, at least in terms of the school districts that I've spoken to, feel like they have the best of all worlds, in that when you hire a tech director, we only have, you know, a team of one, you're getting the best person who knows the most they can, without having the ability to do all of it, right? With this, you're getting people whose expertise is in that particular job, they're just spread out amongst, you know, other people or other, you know, entities. So, you know, the downside is, we don't have somebody physically in our building every day. I think that's a huge downside, especially when we've had somebody who's really been, you know, there every day and held hands.
We've been spoiled.
I think we are.
Yeah.
And, but, you know, like with every change, you have an opportunity to learn, you know, we're already seeing things from Ben's perspective, and different things that we can be upgrading and doing differently. And Paul's been great, he's transitioned well, he just met after a very serious accident, and he came in and met with Ben. And, so, you know, we're already trying to do some upgrades. I think, for example, our SIMS report this year went very smoothly and was done like within a couple of days, and that's not been the, how it's been in the past. So, so that piece is, you know, definitely something that's weighing heavily on me, and, you know, something I really want to talk more with Ben, as he's worked these few weeks, just to see, you know, do you see an IT system working in here? But again, other school systems say, you know, it doesn't miss a beat. It's a very well organized system. Souzer IT is growing, you know, part of why, which is the red flag for me, part of why they hired, or looking to hire someone like Ben, whose expertise is really networking, is they're growing, and their, their plan is to double their size of their organization within the next two years. And, so they're, they're on a hiring track. So I'm a little worried about, you know, would we have consistent people, or will they move people around, because different people have different skills, and may be better in a different located, different location? And that, you know, that becomes a concern to me, because it's always easier when you have consistent people, even when you have a contract, if you have a consistent person that will respond to that contract call, that's far better than if we always, you know, have a different contractor.
Absolutely.
So, so those are the pieces, I don't have firm understanding.
So what about the financial piece of comparing having our one person that's in district and hiring a company, and moving forward, the affordability of that?
Right.
Year after year? If, if you're talking that they're looking at growing, is their price going to be going up in year two or year three?
Exactly. So there, that's the piece that we're going to talk about in our August meeting.
Okay.
The owner is, we did it virtually, he's out in Montana himself on vacation. So that's a piece of it. They do it on a per pupil basis, so they have a fixed rate on a per pupil basis that they give us. For the remainder of this year, they would match with what we have budgeted for the salary of the director, and they, that's what they would charge us.
So essentially, we wouldn't have to make a real decision until the next, next year? Or?
Well, right, I mean, and we.
Possibly, you're saying.
You know, we could do one-year contracts and make a decision at the end of this year to go back to having a director.
It sounds like one of the challenges may be that if they're looking to grow that exponentially, is that there may be a very small pool of people to hire, because if you hire all the people that do that job to work for you, there's not going to be anybody for a school district.
Right.
To bring in.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's.
They're eating up the candidates.
Yes. So, you're looking at bids, you're talking to people who've used them, all the due diligence.
Yeah.
So we'll learn more next month?
I don't think we're meeting before August 3rd, but I'll update you with what I've got done so far.
Thank you for the information.
Yep.
Other questions on the tech situation before we move on?
So just lastly, I think you have an enrollment sheet, nicely color-coded, thank you, Kristy. That's the two years being compared. So right now, we're looking at roughly 373, and I just recently got an update on preschool. We are actually, we are now full in preschool completely, full meaning that we have, we have 15 in each of our classes, we have 30 kids, and, so we're, this would suggest we're actually a little bit overfilled, but remember, it's a part-time and full-time status, two days, three days, and five days. So, so we're, I've got to really kind of look at the registrations in preschool to make sure that we haven't over-subscribed, because we do get EI students coming in over the course of the year. So right now, we're completely full, according to what I was given today.
Do we have a breakdown for the preschool on, like, if they're Hatfield residents or not, or is that not part of it, since it's?
I don't have that yet.
Okay.
I can get that. I just got boys and girls today, so.
Do we have applicants who have officially been turned down for preschool?
So my understanding is that we had only one person that didn't meet the age requirements, but other than a phone call, we didn't send out anything in writing.
And your mix of those 30, we don't know what that schedule yet looks like in terms of, if that really means every day is at capacity?
Correct.
With that group of kids.
I don't have that, I don't know, do you have that, Melissa?
Melissa has.
Melissa has, okay.
Okay, so there's still more to learn?
Yeah, I mean, it's, but.
I'm sure on the 3rd, we can give that to you easy.
With 30 kids, which is pretty significant, actually, I would guess that most days are quite full.
I do know that there's the vast majority were full week requests, but we only had a handful that had that unique schedule.
So there's not really like a waiting list?
Not yet, but if someone came in today, I think they'd be the first on.
Then there would be.
Yep.
And we've adhered to our policy that the starting age is 2.9, being two years and nine months old, by the end of August.
Correct.
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 So the class size, school choice stuff, for me, I needed to just kind of take it back and look at it apples to apples, as much as I could. So hence the color coding.
I love it.
The highlight to me, what stood out, we knew that there was going to be some shift going from grade six to grade seven. And so, my understanding is, there's, this is still like what we know, meaning people have made records requests, and that shift's already started, and this probably captures a lot of it. To me, the, like, oh, okay, while it might not be true to an individual by the numbers, where we are losing our families who have school choice into our elementary school, and are school choicing somewhere else for secondary, is the bulk of what the shift is. And then the other piece of it is, is we look at, so we're looking at about a 4% drop in enrollment right now from last year, and that that's, a lot of that is simply the fact that our preschool head count is capped by capacity, and we had a, you know, for us, a mighty big senior class with 41 students. So we've got 30 pre-K, 41 that finished. There's, there's that net difference right there, and so that 11 head count was always going to be the case. And then, looking at everybody else, we're, we're down about a percent and a half, if you take out the, the difference in the seniors and the pre-K. The rest of that is, while it's six kids, it's six kids, you know, out of almost 400. And while we'd like to see growth, and we have plans to work on that, I think it's good for us to know the data behind what is sometimes not that same narrative, in terms of how many folks are leaving. And it was also exciting to see that there are some grades where we have new Hatfield residents coming in, and it sounds like there may be even more that even aren't on the sheet yet, so.
Yeah, I know of five students within the last three school days, we've handed packets out to two different families, a three and two total.
For Hatfield residents.
For Hatfield residents.
And that's not on this paperwork?
Not on this.
Because this was done before that.
This was done on the 11th, and we are, we only report out who have been registered.
Yeah.
That's pretty good.
I think there's more coming.
And you never know with kindergarten.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
You just never know.
We do know.
So those five, that means we're, we're breaking, we're breaking even until we factor in the big senior class, so we have a little room to break even, but we're getting close. And, and it looks like second, third, fourth, fifth, and kindergarten will all be, in terms of the class of, will all be a little bit bigger than they were last year. It's really good news. Even the class of 23 is bigger.
Let me try, is that the grade, is that the year where like a whole bunch of folk school or something?
12th and 11th both, I believe, when they hit their freshman year, there was a big group, and that was common statewide. It wasn't particular to us, like, I don't know why, but that was a trend that, that was bigger than Hatfield.
It's a good trend, it's just, you know, for sustainability of, you know, the world, but it's interesting. And we're actually, so we, we budgeted for, we told the town to budget for 31, and we are actually at 29 right now.
For Smith Oak?
For Smith Oak. Total. Do you know how many left from eight to nine this year to go to Voke from SM?
I can get that for you, but I don't have it on my head.
Then it's constantly kind of changing, because we have a number of students waitlisted.
Wow.
So we had, I think we had, I want to say we had four that were accepted at last, last time I checked, but we had a number that had been on that waitlist. And so we'll hear throughout the summer if, you know, as they make decisions about where, if other students who are, who are accepted don't choose to go there, and then a slot opens on the waitlist, we'll hear more about that.
So it looks like so far, we know about two from local residents that were eighth graders with us, that are not going to be ninth graders with us. That doesn't mean they're going to Voke, but it's just a small, small shift. I would find it really helpful if we could keep this coming back for the next several meetings, just so we could kind of keep an eye. Are there more questions?
I can update those numbers based on the last email, because we have six that were accepted, but haven't necessarily decided if they're going to be there yet. And we also have four that were, again, haven't even been accepted yet.
Not yet, right.
I believe they have, but that depends on what every other accepted student decides to do.
And it also may be after school year starts. We had a couple this fall that got off the waitlist in October and November.
That seems, that seems really hard. I thought there was more of a hard and fast deadline. I know there is for applying, but as far as accepting and getting in, I thought there was a, a clear deadline, so that districts can better budget for their year and for their class sizes and such.
I mean, I'm not as familiar with Smith or the other one is, what's the other one? Franklin, thank you. Around here, but it's been my experience that that ebbs and flows, because it is really two parts, it's they're accepted, and then they have to, you know, agree to go or decide to go. And that all can be fluid until October 1st.
I don't remember hearing a lot about waitlisted in the past for Voke, so, that's good for them, that it's gaining popularity, but it's hard on us with planning and budget.
What's the budget hit for kid?
It hits the town budget, it doesn't hit the school budget.
Okay.
So, students coming, students heading to charter schools, it's the same. Not saying there isn't a hit elsewhere.
It's a hit in education.
Yeah. But it's not our, it's not out of our budget.
Correct. Do you know, you know how the state was proposing covering charter school costs going forward? Would that include vocational school costs?
I'm not sure.
I don't believe so, because vocational schools are still part of public school systems.
Especially regional.
Charters are non-public.
Gotcha.
But they still take state fund, like, yes, yeah.
They're public.
They're public, but not public.
Publicly funded, non-public schools.
Yes, exactly. So, all right. I did see that school lunches are looking like.
Fingers are crossed.
Funded.
Yes.
Yes.
Great news.
Okay, all right. We had lots to catch up on. So I just want to be aware that we're about a quarter till 5:00. We had said that we would aim for 5 o'clock for public comment. When it hits 5:00, let's have a conversation about whether we stop and take public comment, just so people don't have to wait. At a minimum, we need to check in and tell them where we are, but in the meantime, we could carry on with handbooks. Part of your 300-page pack.
Right, so I don't know, do you feel you need to have it presented, or?
Yeah, I was actually looking to, I wanted to kind of check in with the committee and see, you've had these, there was a lot of reading, how much overview would you like? And there also, if you have requests and changes, it'll come back for a vote at a different meeting. So today is conversational, we do have to get these approved, obviously, in August, because they need to be ready for staff and kids. But I just wanted to get sort of a check-in from the full committee to say, I could really use an overview, or I have read all of this, and I just have a few questions. So thoughts, before we put Connor in the hot seat?
I'm ready for questions. I'm ready for questions. Did you want an overview?
No, I'm saying I'm fine with just a couple of questions as well.
I agree.
It was very helpful to have changes that were highlighted.
Heck, yeah.
So helpful.
Thank you.
I can just give six kind of big snapshot bullet points of things that changed that maybe of interest to folks. And then if there are questions, there are, I counted like 24 individual changes that all are relatively minor. The first change was about the language used for absences, for unacceptable and acceptable absences. I didn't differentiate between, like, if a student was sick, there was no provision in there for, like, if someone was sick with a, for, for a long time, or, you know, had a underlying, you know, something going on that, that made them, you know, out for an extended time, not just in a row, but kind of throughout the year. So we stipulated that, you know, for, for health reasons, that, that they were, would count as acceptable. But we would still be having that conversation with, you know, with, with families and parents if we felt like, hey, you know, if your kiddo's just not getting to school on time, we can't just keep calling him out sick, that kind of thing. But we did want to have a provision in there for if someone had, you know, a legitimate medical reason to, that, that shouldn't prevent them from getting credit towards graduation, basically. The second one, oh, the second one's a change in the graduation requirements specifically for science. So it was possible in the, in the past for someone to get the credits they needed and never take either a life or, they, they could get through without taking life science or without taking a physical science, depending on how they chose it. So we, we kept the requirement of having three lab sciences over the course of four years, and that would need to include both, at least one, one physical and one life science to have some balance there in the terms of the sciences. We took out a part about independent studies because those are, all the independent studies we've had for the last several years have all been considered internships. So they've been, been interning with a, with a teacher for those. The fourth change was a change, the athletics piece. In, in this one, we kind of went back and forth. In the handbook, it stipulated that if a, if a athlete missed a practice for a non-acceptable absence for, then they would miss kind of that much time and, you know, going forward. So if they missed an absence, a practice, then the next game, next day was a game, they would miss the game. We edited that to kind of leave it up to the coaches' discretion for if and when they would, would miss that, simply because we didn't want to find ourselves in the place where if we had, you know, if we're, we're very close on numbers, and so if, if we, we didn't want to wind up in the place where we could have, you know, if someone had, had missed a practice and then be forced, because of the handbook, to miss the next game, and that mean the team would have to forfeit. So obviously, we would like the coach to, to hold to this, except in the event where it would cause, cause something to, to happen where they couldn't play the game. So we wouldn't want the whole team penalized for one, you know, one player's actions. The, the fifth one, I added about not ordering food from services like DoorDash or Grubhub or things like that. We hadn't had that happen this year. And it creates a security issue where, you know, you have deliveries coming to the school that we don't know about, and kids open the door for the delivery person to bring them their DoorDash or Grubhub, so you need to put the kibosh in that. And the last change, this is the, probably the most significant one that I wanted to highlight, is a, a change to the, the dress code policy that, you know, it's, it's outlined pretty detailed in there, based a lot on Hadley's policy and other surrounding districts. And really, in, in kind of keeping with, with the Mass General law, chapter 72, section 83, which I can, I can read. The section 83 is dress and appearance of students protected, and it says, "School officials shall not, shall not abridge the rights of students as to personal dress and appearance, except if such officials determine that such personal dress and appearance violate reasonable standards of health, safety, and cleanliness." So that's kind of the overarching guideline for school dress codes in the state. And ours was a little more, I guess, prescriptive and restrictive than that, that, that had been. Probably the biggest change to that would be that, and I think the students will probably appreciate this, is that we won't have a hat policy going forward. We won't have, we won't have the no hat policy. So, you know, obviously, if it creates a disruption or something, we'll deal with that. Those are the, the big, big ticket changes, I think.
That was actually in my notes about the hats.
Yeah.
I remember that came to us at one point. One of the students said something about the hats. They'll be happy.
It came up at my, like, meet and greet at the gathering, the students asked about it, and it was pretty clear, it was pretty important to them to say, no, hey, would you support this? Well, it's not exactly my call, but sure.
You're probably going to get credit for it now, Adam.
The three years of lab sciences, what other options are there besides just like physics, bio, and chem?
So there's physics, there's biology, there's chemistry, there's AP biology, there's AP chemistry.
Okay, so they have to double down on?
Yep, they could, and frequently they do. And so, so actually, the path that, that led people to be able to get through without having a life science was if folks take biology as a ninth grader, which, which everyone does or will, then they would choose to take AP biology as a 10th grader, so they have that biology background going right into it. And then they open up the, kind of the electives after that, so things like earth and space science, there's, there's a few different science electives that we have too. So that this way, if they, say they take biology, then they take AP biology, their junior that they would want to take, or their senior year, a, 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 a physical science with a lab as well. So that we, they would need to have either that chemistry or that physics to, to make sure that they hit all those requirements.
I have two things, and they're just really clarity or edit correction type of thing. On page 19, in the work-study section, in the top line, you had highlighted juniors and seniors, but then two lines below that, it says must be a senior. And so I'm assuming that you want to add junior to that as well.
Thank you.
And then my other one was at the top of page 10. And I just, I don't know, it didn't read very clear to me.
You're talking about the missing class time section?
Yeah, that number five. So once a student exceeds 20 unacceptable, unexcused absences from school or from an individual class. So there, you're saying school or class, no credits towards graduation from that class or from the day, or no credits will be awarded.
Yeah, that's a good clarifying piece.
It just confused me a little bit of what you actually meant there, because if it just said absences from a class, no credits for the class would make sense, but if they're absent for the day, is it all classes missed from that day?
Yep, it would be, so we'll clarify that.
Just if somehow you could tweak that to make sure it's understood, and that's all that I had.
Yeah, and the sentiment behind that was if someone, you know, wasn't missing school but had decided not to go to a specific class, we would still want them to, want to make sure that they weren't getting credit for that.
I was assuming the intent, but I just thought if it was clear, then nobody would argue it.
Yep.
I have a silly question to tack on to that, but we track that in such a way that that's going to be easy to monitor.
A lot of students trying to order food out, food DoorDash or through.
It was, it was one of those things, I think it was kind of like a flash in the pan sort of thing where, like, someone did it and they're like, hey, it worked. And then all of a sudden, a couple of their folks are like, hey, we're going to try that too, or it's, you know, it's, you know, they, it was more of a novelty piece than anything else, I think. But we want to make sure that it's, we, you know, don't do that.
I was just wondering if there is, if it was happening a lot, like, if it was a need of the student body, if there was a way to do like a once a month or something to try to support, like, the local Hatfield business? Like, it's somewhat organized, like, on this day, if you order by this time from this, you know, Hatfield that they deliver it, and then it's better managed?
Yeah, that could, that could be something to think about, even with, like, student counselor with a, with a class that could do that as a fundraiser too, where they, you know, have, take a percentage. That, that might be kind of a neat thing to, neat thing to do.
In theory, they can leave the building, they could.
Seniors.
Seniors could, seniors could meet the DoorDash driver at the road, in theory.
Don't give them ideas.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't think they're watching our meeting for that, but okay.
It'll get out there. There's a random phone number next to my name.
Yeah, I, I don't know that our phone numbers need to be in the school handbook.
They're in the handbook?
I mean, it's not my number, but.
My number, I would.
Always used to be for people to have access to us.
I think it would be great if it had links to our school email account.
It does.
So they could email.
We had to check something, whether we wanted to supply or, did you write the wrong phone number on that?
I mean, these would be very random seven numbers, I don't know.
What, what page was that on?
As public officials, elected public officials, I think that we have to provide that kind of accessibility.
Do you think we all need to have our phone numbers?
It's like the last or second to last page.
I think we could.
Because we're.
Here, let's, let's let this conversation finish. So I do believe the information is on the website. There are ways to, to reach us without an email. I'm just saying, does it need to be in the handbook?
It also, like, doesn't have my.
School email.
Email, it's my home email address, so we can.
Yeah. So. Let's, let's all give it some thought, and I will take a look as a follow-up in terms of how we are accessible. And in August, when we sit down.
What's required for our accessibility?
I'll take a look, so. So we'll learn the rules, we'll figure out where we already are accessible. I do have a request in with the town to get all that updated on the town website, and so hopefully after today, that will be updated and accurate. But we'll follow up on that. And then we can have a conversation in August about, obviously, we're going to meet the minimums, but we can also look to have other options, and let's decide as a group what we want those to be. Does that work? Okay. So before we log into Zoom, is there anything else we want to talk about with this handbook?
I just had a quick question and two very small comments. One, was there a particular reason we removed the ability for parents to provide their students with excused absences?
A lot of that had to do with, so I, I think further in the handbook, it states that things like vacations are not excused.
Recording in progress.
But that particular piece said that if you gave 10 days advance notice for a vacation, then it was an unexcused or an acceptable absence.
So you just made it more.
Yep. Yeah, if, if we, it's great if we have notice, but those excused absences would still have to fall into those categories, college visitation, you know, things like that, not just giving 10 days, 10 days notice.
That's totally fine. The other thing, it's just like a style point, doesn't even matter that much, but in some of the edits, it says his slash hers slash there, but I noticed elsewhere, it just uses there.
Okay.
Everywhere, so just like for the sake of consistency, I think it's fine. And my last comment was simply that I really appreciate the changes to the dress code. I just wanted to voice that opinion, that I'm very happy that that was less prescriptive.
Good, well, thank you.
So, Mr. Wood, it might make sense to make sure that the elementary school knows what some of those changes are, because I suspect it will be a question from the committee if the less restrictive nature is appropriate for elementary and what the plan is there. So if it's not already being addressed, we might have that question.
Okay.
Okay. So if the committee is in agreement, I would love to take out of order the opportunity to go to public comment, because we did post that we were going to try and do that around 5:00. Does anybody have any, is that acceptable?
That was the plan, let's go for it.
Okay, so.
Are you operating the link?
I have it open.
Okay.
And I do not, because I, I think I had to open it as the meeting post. So I see that we are here, and there are two participants, the community television station and myself. So I'm going to suggest that we leave it open for a few. We'll go on to our next subject and we can check in, but while we're in public comment, floor recognizes David here.
I attended graduation this year, as I usually do, having been the graduation advisor for more than 20 years, and three of the committee members were students as, when I was a graduation advisor. And I was glad, I just want to tell Connor, I was glad to see that our traditions, as we have so many in Hatfield, were kind of back as far as the graduation ceremony is concerned, because I think our graduation ceremony is a really important one that we continue to do the way we did it, and we've done it for years and years and years. Public thank you from me, from Ms. Pulverari and Mrs. Boyle, who were really, I think, part of organizing and putting all that together for the seniors, but that it got supported, you know, and, and we're, we kind of got back at a post-COVID, real graduation in the gym with all the balloons and the whole bit like we've always had. And you guys remembered that from when you did it. The only, and I would just encourage, maybe we can get the band back. Let's figure out a way to bring the band back to the graduation ceremony somehow, some way. In the past, they have played pomp and circumstance to the, for the march in, as well as some piece or two that they work on during the course of the year as a sort of a musical interlude. And I don't know, I don't know if you had chorus or not this year.
This year, no.
Yeah, so that's, if there's chorus, the chorus was always part of that as well. So there's just a couple of things to push back into that, to that ceremony. And you, I offered and you reached out to, about the ceremony itself, and so we had, you know, because you were new to it and hadn't really seen it, so I'm glad you did, and I think, you know, things went well from my perspective as to what I saw.
And the school song needs to come back.
And the what?
School song.
Song, yeah, hopefully, I didn't, I don't, they didn't, okay, they, they sung that, but, but yeah, let's, I was good to see at least we're moving back to that tradition, which I think is a really important one. I think the town really appreciates that and thinks it's an important one, so. That's all, that's all I have for, for comments.
I can respond. Thank you for that, for the support too, when I reached out.
Yeah.
And, and, and a huge thank you to Ms. Dina Pulverari and Ms. Crystal Boyle, Dr. Crystal Boyle, because I had no idea what I was stepping into in February in terms of getting everything ready for graduation. It was a monumental task and they just, they just did a phenomenal job with it.
But that's all I got, but thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in. Okay, we are still not seeing anybody on the Zoom link, and so I'd like to hear from folks in terms of, given that Mrs. Petra is on vacation, do we have conversation that we need to have so that things can get relayed to her about the elementary handbook? Or would you like to make changes in real time next month?
I would like to ask, am I not seeing highlighted changes or?
There are, it is not highlighted. There are, it is not highlighted, but you did get a document link to the general gist of what has changed.
Oh, I think I read that.
So we did make a request for the highlights to be in there because it's much easier to follow. And it could be that maybe someone in the office could do a track change document comparison that would be able to highlight that. I certainly would entertain putting this back on the agenda once we had those highlighted changes. Because I think it would be to the school's advantage that we had that as well, so that we weren't trying to.
I think she was done when that request came. That's the only reason why she went back and did the extra page. But I'll see if she can go back and do that.
I don't know if it saves any time if we bring up any questions that we have about it now, so that it gets to her.
Yeah, I think it's worthwhile. If you have specific questions, they may not get answered, but let's get them on the record so that Mr. Wood can take those back and that there are answers ready so that it's not another delay. Right, new delay.
So of course I found some typos, but. Like for instance, in Riley's email address, her name was spelled wrong. Gribco, our bussing company, was spelled incorrectly with a C instead of a K. There were two things that I have that were not necessarily changes that would have been highlighted that I just caught because I was reading through it and brought me to question it. And one is about the library at the elementary school. Are the elementary students able to check books out of our school library? Because I thought the only books being checked out were when our kids are going to the town library. Because we do not have a librarian that is managing the books there.
I think she's looking for a way to, to make that available to kids.
Okay.
She's just got to figure out her staffing schedule of existing staff to be available to do that.
Okay. Cause I just read that it was in there and I just thought that maybe it should reflect whatever's happening. So if it's not able to happen, we should list that it is. The other thing was the parent teacher conferences, it actually lists the dates in the handbook of December blank and blank. And I would suggest changing that to.
See calendar.
See calendar for exact date so that every year it doesn't need to be caught.
It should have a link to the actual calendar. It shouldn't just say, see the calendar.
Bit of a link.
It needs to have a link.
And the only other thing was, which I think is a big change, and I want to make sure that it's talked about enough so that everyone is aware, people, parents are aware, is that the vehicle pickup in the afternoon is reverting back to what it was pre-pandemic, where parents are going into the building.
Do we know that that's?
It said it in the.
Okay. I, I think that's a conversation we need to have.
Her little blurb.
Do you have any background on why the change?
Primarily it's because after conversations with staff, they would prefer to go that way. It's also less staff required for supervision. Gives them an opportunity to meet with parents briefly, ever so briefly.
Making a connection.
Making a connection and building relationships.
I understand, yeah. Having parents come back in the building will help them feel more connected to the school again.
Right.
Although it was pretty convenient just to roll up in the car.
I hear you.
Just from a security perspective, how does that, is it just an open door at that time?
I need to talk to her more about that.
In the past, what it is, is that parents wait outside of the building, out of their cars, kind of gathered around the door. At a certain time, the door opens by staff members. Parents only go into the cafeteria where teachers are with their students. And you get your kid and you immediately leave. There's enough staff, there was then, there was enough staff in cafeteria.
I don't see how that changes the response, like the staffing. I don't see how that would reduce the number of staff. Might make it a shorter stretch.
If I'm remembering, like fourth, fifth and sixth grade teachers didn't always come down with their students because they were.
Old enough to do that.
Old enough to come down the stairs and into the cafeteria themselves. The younger grades, a teacher or a staff member escorted the class into the cafeteria. And parents just waited.
I hate to say it, but I think given the current culture, but there needs to be some kind of a system for someone doing a check, like either like approved pickup people are given a number and like that's checked before they open, enter the building or like licenses are checked or something just so that the doors aren't open and anyone who wants to is going in the building. I mean, if we're keeping the building locked at all other times of the day, it seems. It seems a little worrisome to, to, to let everybody in.
And it's a back door.
Yeah.
And there's a stairwell right there.
And it's, I, it's, I feel horrible that we're having to have that conversation, but it just doesn't seem to make sense to me to have it so, so protected during the school day and then be like, ah!
Yeah, it's 2:40. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think we need to, I don't know, think about that.
Yeah.
I think also that plays into the aftercare.
Right.
And accessibility into the building as well.
Other things you want, we want to make sure that we address when Mrs. Petra's back with us?
You already mentioned just the dress code.
So I think that gets us through informational reports. So next up is a conversation about our district improvement plan. I think you're, you're set to drive the start of this conversation?
Yeah. So this is a draft. It's literally the first draft. And what I'm looking forward to this evening, this afternoon, is to really get your feedback on some next steps. You know, I think that, as I told you, I think at the previous meeting, this is really another incarnation of the existing plan. And with some updating that is based on work that we're doing this year for next year. And, but it's easily, needs to go through a couple of more iterations with your hand put because it's, it's the district plan. So it's, it's your plan. As well as hearing more from parents, which I think we could do, we could do in August with some, some virtual meetings, just to kind of show them where we are at, at the moment. And then give them an opportunity maybe to do something in person in September. And then also showing whatever that new draft looks like to our faculty to make sure that they're understanding and they're on board as well. So I think there's more work to get more data, if you will, to inform where we're going. It would be helpful to maybe narrow our focus around a general theme of the, of the activities of what we're trying to do. We've been talking collectively, collectively about things that we need to really identify as ways to make Hatfield a destination. And for not only for, for our students who live here, but also for our parents and families who consider us for school choice. And there may be things that we need to edit and draft this plan to show that we're committed to the kind of updates and upgrades that we need to have. No hats, maybe one of them, that, you know, will attract people to, to stay here and to stay with us. Because not only, not only do we want our Hatfield residents to stay with us, but we also have the same situation with school choice where students leave at the end of sixth grade, at the end of fifth or sixth grade to go to a regional school district that starts at sixth grade or, or because they want to get in. So that's something that we want to pay attention to. And it's also in conjunction with what's happening in Hatfield. Where is the comprehensive plan? I know we have a liaison with that and I don't know where that's at. But I'd love to see if there's a connection we can make in this plan with them. And, and so that we can use it really as a document that says, here, we're doing this. This is our plan going forward. This is why we need the kind of funding we need. This might, me, this might be information you need to, to advocate for an override, if that's something that the town decides to move forward for. And, or this is a reason why we need a, you know, a budget for marketing, because we need to really get out the word that we're open for school choice and we have room. You know, different things that are avenues that we need to explore to, to really look at our overall availability and sustainability.
So Mr. Wood and I have spoken a little bit about this. And one of the things that I'm really interested in doing is taking it out of this format, that there are some other tools that we could employ that would help us bring all of the information that he's just speaking to in, but then give us a way of saying, okay, who are our stakeholders? Let's prioritize who they are. It's kids primarily, but it's not only kids. What are the things that we believe we need to be doing to achieve our goal of sustainability? Which is about being, you know, a target place to be. And so that we can take a look at that. And there are some other tools in doing that that would help us set out priorities, take a look at the resources that we need specifically for that. And take a look at it from a calendar perspective. Once we have, I mean, the number one priority might be something that has to happen third, only because if you don't do something else on the list, you can't do that successfully. I think the format we're in now is, that's a challenging conversation to have in the way that it's laid out. And I believe that it's our opportunity to have a really robust conversation about what we want our school district to be. Because I think we all know, coming out of the last budget season, the next three to five years are really key for us in where we go and what's available. So it seems like a great opportunity to get a lot of buy-in from the community. And that we haven't really done that yet. And so my thought to offer up to you guys is, can we take a little half step back and kind of regroup without making too many assumptions? Because there may be other ideas that need to come to the table, that need to come up, that just aren't on plan yet. That's going to take some work on our part to do that. Both in terms of helping make sure that the community comes to the table and has those conversations and that we do a lot of good listening. And also rolling up our sleeves in the next six to eight weeks and doing some work on this, which is going to be some meeting time. I, I don't know a way around that that will actually get to a really good result. So.
Would it make sense to have a subcommittee?
We certainly can entertain that. And we've talked a little about that. And it might be, I mean, we've talked about, you know, the possibility of sustainability subcommittee that would have sort of a short-term planning so that things come back to the full committee, but there's some work being done. But certainly I could see that being merged with this because they're very much part and parcel. I know you, Becca, you've done a lot of thinking about this too.
Yes, I feel very strongly about sustainability work for our, for our district. And, and I agree completely. I mean, the district improvement plan is going to drive our direction. And I think our direction over the next three years is really key in maintaining the sustainability of us as a district. So I, I would like to have a better sense of stakeholder feedback from a wider group of people so we can appropriately, appropriately set our goals. And, you know, especially as I'm looking at the sustainability section here, it lists some current programs that need further development. We are a small district. It's unlikely that we can be all things to all people. But if we have a better sense of where our community would like to see us, where our opportunities are and where our strengths are, I think we can really sort of pour into that and.
And there's an overlay over that of what's feasible to do.
Right.
Because part of that is, well, what's it really cost to make some of those changes? Because we're going to have to pick. I mean, we're not, both, we won't have the student body to do all things for all people, but we won't have the resources to do all things.
Right.
So.
Something else that I'm wondering if we're going to be looking at this and changing the format. Is there a way to put in any other timeline other than all of these are starting off by the end of 2025? Is there, is there any way that we have a, we show some steps that, you know, the goal is in the first year this will happen or like.
And it should be stepped through, like from a calendar standpoint. You can't just get to the end.
I know. When I read this, it's just like, well, that's great that by 2025, we want all this to have been met. But potentially that could mean that in 2024 is when we go, all right, let's get going on this and get started.
This is really designed to be, you know, a multi-stakeholder plan for our district. We could have, all of what you say could be the plan. It could be that, you know, by the end of 2024, we have a sustainability plan. But, you know, by, or, or by the end of 2023, we have a sustainability committee. By the end of 2024, we have a financial plan developed to address initiatives that have come out of stakeholder meetings. You know, so we could even get it to be that granular, if you will. It doesn't have to be as lofty. And there's pieces in here that are, that are kind of lofty. You know, it doesn't address, for example, diversity and equity and inclusion as much as I would like it to. So, you know, this is our plan, so we can have it as step oriented as we want it to be with some of the very basic things that we've talked about this evening that, you know, just make it look like, okay, this is how we're going to organize our school committee work. We're going to have a standing agenda item on sustainability. This is what we've done so far and this is what the work group, working group has done. Or this committee has done, you know, however you want to plan it. So it's really wide open in that regard. It doesn't have to be.
Ultimately, it's, it's as a committee, this is our plan.
Right.
This is, I mean, in the big scheme of things, I think this is what we got elected to do because this is setting the marching orders for everything else that flows from it. So our impact on curriculum is here. Our, our impact on how we staff is here. So we have budgets and policies as well. But all of that really should start from the district improvement plan. So, and, and I think, you know, COVID kind of hijacked a lot of that kind of conversation for multiple years. We haven't tuned into this and this is an opportunity for us to do so. And I think it's, it's our best way of helping the district succeed and kids succeed. So as a next step, is there a good consensus that having a subcommittee would be helpful?
I think if the subcommittee can do some of the work.
Because then there's something to come back.
Bring forward.
Okay. So my sense is that subcommittee could potentially include people from off, beyond just our committee. And so I'm going to ask if you guys would give some thought, both administrative, administrators giving some thought and committee members giving some thought as to individuals that would be really well-suited for that. I'm going to ask committee members to give some thought to their availability and desires to support that subcommittee and what that would look like. And if you can get back to me in the next week, I would appreciate that.
I believe we had years ago a subcommittee, a working group, whatever you want to call it, that has worked or had. that has worked or had input on the district improvement plan. And I'm trying to remember the makeup of the group. And I would think that if we can look back either in minutes or some other record or even prior approved plans from five years ago, seven years ago, we might be able to come up with some, a template of how it was made up in the past. We certainly couldn't adjust it, but that would.
Right.
Sort of perhaps ideas if we are missing somebody that we're coming up with.
Great. Does that work for folks?
That sounds great.
Okay. So I would suggest that we go ahead and I think we could table the school improvement plans, unless that's going to be problematic for any reason, as they would seemingly fall out of the district improvement plan. Okay. So next up is a conversation about a school year planning calendar. And this is printed as a draft in your handy-dandy binder.
Yep, go ahead. Doctor just goes to leave for childcare.
Can you point out where that would be and which section or?
And the agenda.
So it's right, yeah.
Thank you.
So it's in the meetings, plannings and calendars section?
Just further back, okay.
So do you want me to take this or did you want to?
If you want to go ahead, I don't think I have a copy of that, so.
Oh.
I can pull it up on my iPad.
There's a link on the agenda.
There's a link on the agenda to it.
Oh, yeah.
So as it happens, we started working on this. And then over the weekend, I was at MASC, did their summer session. And I happened to go to a session about meetings, planning meetings, conducting meetings. And one of their best practices was, oh, you should have a calendar for the year. Do you have a calendar for the year? And I was like, oh, as a matter of fact, we do, or we, we're starting. And so the intent of this is multifold. And I want to talk about that just a little bit so that you understand what we can use it for and why it's worth your time to pay attention to now and going forward. So the hope is couple-fold. One, that the full committee has some visibility as to what's coming. So that it's like, what are we, what are we going to be talking about this month? What's our focus? And that if you have things that you want to make sure the committee is looking at and talking about, you have a really good opportunity to bring that in to the discussion. The hope is that we can balance our workload so that your packets aren't ever 300 pages again. So that, you know, every month has work, but not all of it in one month. I think it's probably going to be helpful for us to make sure that we're just getting the stuff done in an order that is the most efficient for us. For example, our superintendent review is going to happen before elections. Would be a takeaway we could agree to. So that if there was changes that, you know.
Definitely.
That there's, that we have, we have done that part before we go, or whoever. So this is just some of the stuff that can show up. And I picked up a couple copies from other districts who do something similar. So that it was like, oh, what do they put on this? What do they put on theirs that we didn't have? And we've added a few things going through. So the other piece of this that I think warrants a conversation tonight from us is really getting some clarity about what are our goals for this year? Because ultimately, it would be lovely for us to craft this such that we're having conversations from finance, from policy, from leadership, from district business that are thematically together. So that if there's policy that impacts how we look at capital planning, that that's, that that's being addressed before we get to capital planning. So that those conversations flow and we're not sort of struggling to keep up with that stuff. And I think this gives us an opportunity to say, let's frame out and make sure that if we have some overriding things that we want to talk about, like sustainability, that we're taking a look at it from the standpoint of like, okay, if that's our focus, what do we need to make sure we cover in policy? What do we need to make sure we're doing for, you know, day-to-day business stuff that addresses that? What do we need to, what's the timeline of that conversation look like through the, through the lens of the finance committee? So that we're lining that work up. So right now, everything on here is a placeholder. I think stuff can move around. I think there's stuff that's missing. I think there's stuff we can talk about. You know, yeah, it would be great for us to talk about health education, but there's too much on our plate. Let's move that to next year. This is the time for us to sort of pave, pave the way for the rest of the year. And hopefully that will make all our subsequent meetings easier. So.
Is this something that we're going to work on more at our August 3 meeting, which is our work session?
We absolutely can. And it's never going to, like, I don't think this is the kind of thing that becomes set in stone. I think certainly we can put milestones in here that we always want to catch. But there's going to be some stuff that, that moves and evolves. A lot of districts look like they do this where they're really nailed out a good three months ahead. But past that, it's still sort of building. So some of the next steps in my mind are like, we need to sit down with town finance and talk about what's on their radar and what's the timeline for that? Because that might drive some conversations we have. Other, so I don't know if anybody had time to digest this because there was a lot to digest for this month. And this was sort of a standout anomaly.
I had some thoughts, but I think that it's more appropriate to do it at the next meeting when we're going to talk it out and work on it.
Okay.
It's nothing important that needs to use up our time this evening.
I'm fine with that. Anybody else want to capture anything?
I feel the same way as Kathy.
Okay. So I think the key though is that when we come into August 3, that we've all spent a little bit of time giving thought to what else do we want to make sure gets on here? And how that flows through the year so that we're matching stuff up? Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I will take a look at other districts that I have and start a little side list so that we can plug it in so that it's not, we'll probably start with a clean sheet. Okay. Anything else? It looked nice. Somebody took a picture of it.
It is pretty.
Very funny. Okay. Next up on our agenda is the annual superintendent evaluation. And this puts us into our working session. This will require a motion. I believe I can share a synopsis. You have a copy of the summary that will also get filed with DESI. And so as you will remember, when Mr. Wood went mid-year from being our interim superintendent to our permanent superintendent, at that point, he worked up goals around professional practice, student learning, district and district improvement. And the four of us that were sitting on the committee last year with Mr. Wood have gone through and done this evaluation. And I, and I think we thought it was important to note that during his first year, which started as an interim, he had the responsibility of helping shepherd us through another year of pandemic and educational recovery from that. He hired two principals. He temporarily shepherded each of the schools through that transition when they were mid-year without a principal. He conducted simultaneous negotiations on two contracts. And he helped secure school funding for one of the largest budget increases in recent times, which allowed us to continue level services. And his extensive experience and professionalism allowed us to get all of that done. And so, Mr. Wood, we are very indebted to you and your excellent wearing of many hats. And for that reason, we have rated you a summary performance of proficient, which, which sounds not entirely as good as it should. So that's DESI's word, not ours. That certainly, it does reflect a really outstanding job for the district. And so coming out of this, we have noted in your write-up, there are observations around strengths with extensive experience, the modeling of continuous improvement, improving relationships within the school community and beyond. And that clearly you dealt with a year where there were a lot of things beyond any superintendent's control. And so there's a lot of really positive feedback. And there was some consensus in one key area in which the district was requesting an action item coming into the 2223 school year. And that we see a lot of opportunity for the district to have an overall communications plan. And that that would set goals and establish district norms for distributing information and generating even greater engagement with the school committee, the school community and the town as a whole. And so I think we all look forward to a great year working together and a collaboration on shared goals. And I feel like the work we're setting out on really sets us up to do that well. And we would appreciate the communications plan as a folded into that.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions?
None at all. We had a chance to go over it in detail and the feedback that you gave, I think, is spot-on. You know, I always can grow and get better at what I do and get, learn more about different approaches to publish, publishing material, double-checking and editing my materials so that it presents well, reflects well of me, reflects well of the district. And so I thought your, your feedback was spot-on and you didn't miss anything that I haven't already either beat myself up already on or thought about long before I heard it from you. So, you know, I think we're all on the same page.
Awesome. I told Mr. Wood earlier, I would not want to be a superintendent who had to do my eval in public. So hats off to that.
And this last year was very unique for, for you especially, coming in as, you know, as an interim, but then filling in as a high school principal and then an elementary principal and then negotiating two contracts. And like, like this meeting, there was just so much dumped on you in that timeframe. And it's very admirable of how you got us through all of that. And we appreciate it very much.
Very much.
It's a great, great community. I enjoy being here very much.
We're lucky to have you. So I would entertain a motion to approve our superintendent evaluation.
Well, I will make that motion to approve the superintendent evaluation for Mr. Michael Wood as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I agree. So unanimous agreement. I would like to table item seven related to contract ratification and move on to new business. Any objections? Yep. So while I am designated to talk about new business, I am going to ask Mr. Wood to speak to the computer donation.
Yeah. And I, Mr. Snyder did not get something in writing to me, so I don't know the full scale of that. So we'll have to put that to the August 3 meeting.
In which case, we're going to move on to the June 8 minutes. Is there a motion to approve the June 8 minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
There was one small typo that I caught. Second page at the top, this Bremner's name is spelled there with an H.
What?
At the top in the directory.
My computer doesn't know your name yet.
Yeah, your name.
Did you call me Holly?
No, Bremner with an H. B-R-E-H-M-N-N-E.
I've never even heard of that version.
I hadn't either and that's why it stuck out to me.
Thank you.
You've said Holly a lot.
Either Holly or two Ms or two Ns, like those are the common ones. When you said H is Bremner, I was like, what are you talking about?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's minor, but you know, I just thought we'd take care of that.
So any further? Can we amend?
That was a small typo.
So perhaps we could accept the minutes as amended? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
It's really a test to see if Kathy's reading them.
So with that, we are scheduled to adjourn at.
Is that happening or not? Not today?
Not today. Thank you. So with that, we're scheduled to adjourn. There's no, there's not a posting for other new business. And so it's 5:44. Do we have a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you very much.